Okay, good evening. Are we ready to go up out in IT land? Good, thank you. All right. We're gonna call this city council meeting to order for June 8th. I'm sorry, May 20th. Looking at June 8th, right in front of me. Yeah. Anyway, whatever date it is today. Adam Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Gendal. Councilman Lenard.
Here.
Councilman Rixby.
Here.
Mayor Per temporary daily.
Here.
Mayor Duper.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We had no closed session tonight. Councilmember Lenard, would you please lead us in the invocation and pledge?
Dear God, we thank you for your love for us, your watch care over us, and continue to assist in our well-being. We pray your presence will be here and that you will be with us, bless us, help us come to the right decisions for this great city of Loma Linda. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, this will be the time where we have public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak on a non-agendized item may do so now. I'm looking over to see if we have any online takers. It doesn't look like we do. Nobody's running down here in the audience, so we will move on. Moving on to our schedule and related items. Item number one is a presentation to the Loma Linda Firefighters Association in recognition of their efforts at the Loma Linda Community Garden. If I could invite our association leadership up here. This is something I know Councilmember Gendal has been involved in this project and a few of you guys directly. I received a letter from somebody here in town that was very appreciative and thankful for what you guys were doing out there. And I know you guys spent a lot of time on your own off-duty time. You brought in your own tools. You did a lot of stuff for the community, and that just goes to show what a fabulous organization you guys are and how much you take care of us. So, on behalf of the entire council, we want to do this proclamation. And this is to the Loma Linda Firefighters Association in recognition and appreciation for going above and beyond assisting at the Loma Linda Community Garden. Your efforts are appreciated by the volunteers and garden members as well as the city of Loma Linda. Your kindness and compassion are what make our community so special. So, thank you very, very much. You guys want to say anything?
Thank you guys a couple of words.
Okay.
Well, your recognition is not necessary, but it's appreciated. Sometimes the best opportunities arrive when we aren't looking. The Loma Linda firefighters never sat out to be gardeners, to be honest with you. When I asked this group of guys in the back here for their help with the project, they were a little confused, to be honest. I said, "We have an opportunity to create a sense of community within our city that doesn't really exist yet. It's not that different than what we do daily. We help people and we solve problems." I said, "I need your money, your time, and your manpower." And with a resounding yes, I was surprised that everyone agreed. We have a long way to go, but eventually we'll have a place in our city that we can all be proud of. Some people use it for food or hobby, others for social reason, but one thing that I've noticed, it brings people together that may not have otherwise been friends. A special thanks to the hard-working public work employees that showed up with a smile on their face and a willingness to do whatever was asked. Great group of guys. Lastly, I'd like to thank Chief Harker. None of this would be possible without the support and guidance that your leadership has shown, and I hope when it's all done, eventually it will all be done. Everyone will be proud. So, thank you.
Thank you guys again. You want to say something?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Duper. So, I would like to echo the sentiments that were conveyed by the Firefighter Association. I'm really ecstatic that the firefighters are receiving this reward and recognition for all the hard work and effort that you have put into the garden. As was mentioned, this is something that brings the community together. We are known as a healthy city. The more type of initiatives that we have like this garden, the better off our community will be. This is some back-breaking work and requires a lot of effort in addition to the duties that you already perform to keep our city safe, and we are really appreciative. Now, we have 12 firefighters that I count in this room, so I do apologize that I'm not gonna be able to get to everyone, but I would like to call out a few individuals which have really been with us since the beginning and have put in a lot of hard work, a lot of time, and a lot of effort. First of all, for Nate, who was a catalyst for getting volunteers and resources organized. If we had before and after pictures, we would see the major differences that we've had in the garden in the past eight months. Without him, none of which we have accomplished would have been possible, and because he's a master wood craftsman, he's done a really good job of giving the garden an earthly touch. Nick, for his passion in gardening and some great recommendations which he's given of what type of plants and flora we should have in the garden. George, for all the cement work that he's done over the past few months in giving the garden an official and authentic feel. Ben, for helping with design ideas for the garden. Jake, so if you go to the garden, you will see that we have cattle panels, which are, they're kind of like arches. Jake was instrumental in designing them and building those arches. And then finally, Chief Harker, for being accommodating and helping the volunteers, the firefighters, find time to volunteer at the garden and make it what it is. Again, if you see the progress that we've made in the past few months, it's zero to 80, and as mentioned, we do have a ways to go, but I'm confident with the community, with the city staff, and with the firefighters all working together in tandem, we're gonna have one of the best gardens in the inland empire and even SoCal. So, really excited to see the future stages of the garden.
Awesome, thank you. Maybe we can get some progress pictures next time. I kind of thought about it too late, and I thought, "Oh, man." So, maybe we can bring that back. Thank you guys again. Moving on to item number two is a presentation by CRNR.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to invite Milford to come out and present this item, please, as part of CRNR.
Thank you, Jarb. Mayor and city councilmembers, it's great to be in this room again. It's been 14 months since I've been in this room, and it's been 14 months since I put on a suit, and somehow I messed up in storing my good clothes because they've all shrunk. I don't understand that, but I must not have bought good material in the beginning. What can you do? We're here to ask your support for the Prop 218 notice that's going to go out relative to our contract, but one of the most important things we're gonna do tonight is tell you about AB 1383. This is 1383, 127 pages, and it is titled "The Short-lived Climate Pollutants: Organic Waste Reduction Final Regulation Text." And this is something that we, all the cities and all of the contractors, have to abide by. And it's just another gift without payment from Sacramento. Julie Beretta is also with me this evening is Belin Cordero. Belin works closely with your staff, and she is a great resource for the city and for your staff and for all of the facilities in the city that are required to have various trash containers, et cetera. She is our sustainability manager. Also with us is Julie Beretta, and Julie is, has been involved with the city of Loma Linda way back when, when Waste Management was the contractor for the city, and up until a while back, a short while back, she worked for them, but she has come over to the light side, and the right side, and she's our senior vice president, our regional vice president for CRNR, and she will, she has a PowerPoint presentation about this that she will present to you at this time.
Thank you, Milford. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and staff. I'm pleased to be here this evening, and I think the last time I was here, I was telling Jarb he was still here. It's been remodeled, so it's very nice. I think it was in early 2000s was the last time I was here, and it looked a little bit different, but it's my pleasure to be here this evening, trying not to bore you, bring a little bit of light, kind of an overview summary. So, we've put together an agenda for you this evening, so we're gonna talk about the requirements, some key due dates and responsibilities for cities, talk about the edible food recovery program, some education requirements, jurisdiction procurement requirements, infrastructure requirements, compliance review, and contamination monitoring, solutions that CRNR has for the city to be in compliance with 1383 and what the next steps are. So, just a little bit of background, SB 1383 was signed into law by Governor Brown in 2016, and the whole purpose of it was to reduce organic waste disposal by 75% by 2025 statewide, and that equates to, to get to the 75% reduction, 20 million tons annually of organic waste, which I'll classify as food waste and green waste, to come out of the landfill statewide. Another part of the bill is to increase edible food recovery by 20% by 2025, and all of this great unfunded state mandate goes into effect January 1 of 2022. It'll be here before we know it. So, we wanted to cover some highlights of the jurisdictional requirements. So, cities are required to provide a separate organic waste collection service to all residents and businesses, establish an edible food recovery program to pull food that's packaged food or food that's not eaten in grocery stores, could be within the school districts. In the past, obviously, a lot of that's gone into the waste stream, but try to give it back so people that need food can get that food. There's extensive outreach that needs to happen to all affected parties, the generators, meaning residents or businesses, facilities, the food recovery organizations, cities, counties, and the waste haulers. The cities also have to look at capacity planning. They need to procure recycled organic waste products and implement some pretty hefty record-keeping requirements, so when CalRecycle comes and checks in with the cities on a regular basis, the city will have that data. So, I'll get into a little more detail of each of those items, but starting with the key due dates, as I mentioned, this law goes into effect January 1, 2022, so this coming January. And I kind of covered on these things, we have to start, all this stuff has to be implemented and in place by January 1, not after January 1. So, again, as Milford mentioned, that's why there is a Prop 218 before you, and so we could do some changes behind the scenes to implement the programs at the curb into the businesses. And most importantly, cities statewide are required to adopt an ordinance that has some enforcement mechanisms, and those are covered on the next block to the right. So, after implementation, January 1, so between January 2022 and January 2024, there'll be compliance reviews, route reviews, and inspections that are gonna be required. Businesses will need to be identified that are in violation of not complying with 1383, and jurisdictions must take action, and this is part of the bill, must take action against non-compliant entities issuing notices of violations and penalties with those violations. So, talking a little bit about edible food recovery. So, if you look at the pictures I have here on the right, it really impacts all local governments, commercial generators, your businesses, including our fire stations, they would be part of that, food banks, pantries, health departments, kitchens, schools, as I mentioned. So, looking for, cities have to identify existing food recovery capacity. So, do you have a resource to offer these generators that want to donate their edible food? If cities don't have a location within their city, they can look to neighboring cities and just find those resources, and then we can communicate those back to the customers as we talk to them. So, as I mentioned, making sure that the food recovery generators have somewhere to take the food services. The cities are also required to identify commercial food generators, a tier one and tier two. Tier one is basically anyone that has 10,000 square feet of a building or larger. I believe for Loma Linda, the majority of your customers that will contact are gonna be in the tier two level, more like your smaller grocery stores, and as I mentioned, hospitals and of that nature. And then we're required to do some commercial monitoring to make sure that these folks are in compliance. There's a lot of education that has to go out annually, educate all residents, businesses, food generators, the self-haulers. So, if someone finds a company that wants to self-haul their edible food waste organics, we have to track and document all of that. Jurisdictions have to provide print or electronic communications, and the cities can also supplement with direct communications such as social media posts, maybe some auto dials, and then these are just some samples of what we've implemented in a couple other cities already, of material we already have printed and ready to go. So, cities also have to have a procurement requirement, and CalRecycle has come up with a calculator that cities have to recycle their organic waste, .08 tons per resident. So, we looked, we got the population, current population off the city's website, you multiply that times .08, and the city has to procure just under 2,000 tons of organic waste, and the whole thought is, is they want to close the loop. You recycle it, and then it turns into something beneficial use, and it goes back into your city. And so, those can come through compost, RNG, renewable natural gas, and electricity. So, the compost, obviously, you could use for your city-managed projects, public landscaping for your garden. We could look at compost for that, that comes from the organic waste, and then if the city runs any renewable gas vehicles, that also gives you that credit, so it's not necessarily buying something. You may have some of these products already available that will give you credit, and we can help identify that for you. And then this has been in place for a while. The state also asks that you continue to buy recycled content, paper, and material as long as it is, there's some recyclability behind it. Infrastructure requirements. Cities need to look at their current infrastructure and plan or identify places just to make sure that Loma Linda has somewhere to take their organic waste. And again, I'm just listing these, these are actually documents that CalRecycle, when they meet with your staff, quarterly, annually check-ins, they're gonna ask for this updates. Have you identified? Do you know what you have? Do you know where your stuff's gonna go? Compliance review, contamination monitoring. So, annually, all businesses will be contacted to make sure that everybody has a program in place. Verify businesses are subscribed or self-hauling, so again, all that has to be documented. And then this is something new that hasn't happened with the previous bills that CalRecycle has put out on recycling, that we have to lift lids. So, we're calling it lid flipping, is what we've identified internally. So, route reviews have to be conducted on all commercial and residential routes and look for contamination. So, it's not every single household. You do a random sampling along the routes, commercial businesses as well, and you do a visual inspection. We'll probably have folks that have trash pickers kind of sifting through to see if they can identify if there's trash in the organics or recyclables in the organics, something that doesn't belong in there, and then those folks are required to be notified either with a tag on their card or a follow-up email or a follow-up hard mail, and that's for all residential and commercial customers. Those routes have to be done annually. So, just to give you some perspective, and I give a lot of credit on these numbers here, they'll go over to city staff and to Belin, who spends a lot of time visiting these customers. So, MCR is mandatory commercial recycling, AB 341. That's basically saying that all commercial businesses must have a recycling program, so that was focused more on cardboard and paper. So, if you see the numbers for the businesses, the top yellow bar on the left, CalRecycle likes us to report the percent not recycling, but I like to flip that to the positive. So, the percent not recycling as of the end of March was 3%. So, 97% of your businesses are compliant with AB 341, which is extremely good. I mean, extremely good compared to a lot of other cities statewide. And then multifamily, they're 94% compliant, which again is very good. So, you're talking about your apartment complexes or duplexes, they're all doing their part, and they're recycling. And then more on the right side, that was AB 1826, the first organics program that came before 1383. Same thing, we had identified businesses that generated two cubic yards of waste or more had to have a organics program, and same numbers. They're at 94% for businesses, and today, multifamily, Belin, are these numbers right, worth 100%? So, great numbers. I mean, that's, it's really unheard of, I have to say. It's really nice to see that. So, these programs don't go away just because 1383 came on board. We still have to monitor and track this stuff for the cities, and then now we have to add the 1383 stuff to it. So, solutions. Obviously, we're here to be your partner. We want to work with the city and help you, and so our goal and solution is to convert, every home today has a cart for yard waste and to convert that cart into the organics cart. So, it'll be co-collected. Residents will put food scraps and green waste into their cart at the curb. We're required to make sure that we have appropriate labels for lids that show the acceptable items, and we're switching to trying to do more pictures for folks rather than a lot of writing. The other part that's really important that we want to share is that no plastic bags can be thrown in to the organics cart. So, again, you know, it's kind of nasty. So, once a year, I mean, once a year, we'll replace them at no charge, but you know, you could still hose them out, but then you have the issues with the stormwater issues, and I mean, most of that stuff today is going into the trash can, but the difference is it's bagged. So, the yard waste will absorb it, but let's all face it, everyone knows what's the smelliest cart at their home, it's the green waste cart, and now we're gonna throw some food in it. So, that should be fun. Residents can purchase if they want. There are decompostable bags, but they're pricey, but you can buy them at Home Depot or Lowe's. They sell bags, but as long as they're decompostable, those can go in, but not like your plastic bags that we're getting nowadays from the grocery stores or Targets or Walmarts. Those cannot go in. Obviously, we're also here to help with compliance, and we're here to assist the city with the outreach materials, as I showed. Here's another example. We'll help with direct mailers, bill inserts. We'll also work with the cities. If the city helps us identify where we can take the edible food, we will educate the customers and give that information and let them know where they can take the materials, and then we also will help track to find out who's in compliance and who's not. And then we are also going to help the city with what I mentioned, doing the lid flipping. Some cities are choosing it to do it themselves, or they may have staff on board, but part of our solution would be that we can do that contamination monitoring and do the lid flipping for the city. Infrastructure, as I mentioned, cities have to just make sure they have somewhere to take it, and we do have the solution for you. CRNR is one of the only environmental services company that offers co-collection of residential food waste and green waste that can capture 100% of the methane emissions, and CRNR can guarantee the city for many, many years to come that we will be able to process your organics at our Yuma composting facility. And then with that, if we're composting, we have a lot of compost that we could work with the city to give back for our city, the medians, wherever you need it, city facilities, parks, gardens, as we mentioned, we can help the city with that as well. So, the next steps would be to review and adopt an ordinance that's required by CalRecycle, and I'm sure they'll be asking Jarb if they haven't already, "Have you adopted your ordinance? When's that happening?" Obviously, with that would be some minor changes and amendment to the franchise agreement to include all this language, and then to obviously include the language regarding compliance, which is the things I mentioned, the reporting, the outreach, and the contamination monitoring. And then there's gonna be some rates that go along with that for this new service, for residential and commercial rates that would be effective July 1, and then again on July, or January 1, 2022. And I said, Milford mentioned that those rates are going out in the Prop 218 notice sometime this week, correct? So, with that, July 1, which is normal for us, that we have an adjustment in July per our contract. There's a new disposal rate and host fee that will go into effect July 1. It's included in the Prop 218 notice that I mentioned that's going out, and there's also a new cost for food and green waste processing as part of that 218 as well. And all these things I mentioned obviously come with a cost, and those are things we just don't know yet, to be quite honest, when we talk about lid flipping and education and phone calls, and we have Belin, but I don't know if Belin's enough. And so, you know, and I know the city, fortunate that your city has some staff dedicated, where there's other cities that don't have staff dedicated. So, what we're asking to do is we want to wait a year. We'll start January 1. We'll look at resources, how things are going. If we're not seeing diversion numbers or, you know, if we're not seeing the numbers that we want to see or that we think the state will not be happy with, then we'll sit down with staff again and say, "Okay, what do we think we need to do? Does the staff have some additional resources?" And we can review that again before July of next year. Okay. Yes, that's the last one, I think. Yeah. So, I know that was a lot, and I tried not to bore you, but you're not alone. Every state, or every city in the state has to go through the same thing that we're going through this evening, but I'm available for any questions if anyone has any.
Do you have any idea what the percentage of cost?
So, that's why I asked Julie to leave that slide on. There's a couple of things. The city, a group of the city within the San Francisco County has been negotiating with the county of San Bernardino for the waste disposal agreement, or the WDA. We were successful at, asked the county to reduce the tipping fee by 2.9%. So, our tipping fee is lower by $1.12 per ton. And then, as part of Prop 218, we're gonna be mailing out this Thursday for the public hearing on June 29, is that the CPI will be increased by about 2.8%, which is equivalent to 47 cents per month, rate increase. And then come January 1 of 2022, then the food waste cost will kick in at $3.12 per month. So, that will be mailing out this Thursday, and the public will have a chance to come in for a public hearing on June 29, so that if it's successful and it's a city council approve, it will be effective July 1 of 2021.
And that is the cost estimate with you guys doing all the work and the tipping and all that stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Lid flipping, whatever it is, I'm sorry.
Lid flipping. It's a really technical term that we use.
Are you gonna examine what kind of food I eat and?
I hope not.
Send a report to the NSA or anything like that?
I hope not, no. TMZ, that's what we're gonna send it.
What are we here to do tonight?
Listen.
Is this just a report and file or?
Listen, grimace, and then prepare for the council bill next month.
I mean, if, whenever it's time for questions, I've got a few. I think Lenard's got more than I do. Oh, yeah.
I have quite a few, though.
He's gonna walk out right now.
All right, I'll do that for a moment, then we'll take them. How about that?
That's fine.
All right. So, I actually asked about something similar last month. So, at the garden, we have a worm farm that's starting, and it just so happened I watched a documentary on Netflix. San Francisco did this, I think it was a few years ago. Is this similar to what was trialed there, and is it just being rolled out on a larger scale?
No, this is a little bit different. This is, there's so much food that goes into the landfills. Really, it's much bigger than that. So, I mean, those are small components to kind of get us where we need to go. I mean, backyard composting has been going on for years with the hope of keeping that stuff out of the landfills. I can remember my grandma would sprinkle coffee grounds and stuff on her strawberries and other food scraps for nutrients, but they, obviously, Northern California has been more of the lead in. But they, obviously Northern California has been more of the lead in sustainability, I guess you could say, but the bigger picture is keeping space in the landfills and reducing the greenhouse gas emissions.
Got it. So what I'm referencing is they had basically two different bins, right? One is for food waste, so they would reduce the amount of food waste that was going into landfills. Help me understand this because I, I might be getting it wrong. We have special organics cart, an organics cart that we're going to put food waste, mulch, whatever it is into that. What's the difference between the two ideas?
So it's still a three collection system. So you'll have one for trash, one for commingled recyclables, and then one for the, the yard waste. There's still a lot of things that we can't recycle or can't be put with food and green. I mean, I use things as plastics, styrofoam, kids' plastic toys, you know, just, I mean, garden hoses, that's a lot of things we get in the blue cart that people think can be recycled and they can't. So there's still definitely use for having that trash cart, but the volume's going to shift. We'll probably see the other cart being fuller and a little heavier because food is, food is technically heavier.
So would it be a fourth or would it replace a green cart?
No, it's placing the green. So that, that is an option that CalRecycle offered. They offered a two cart, a three cart and a four cart system. I assure you, if we said we wanted to source separate and leave a green cart just for your yard waste and then the next color is brown, because the state tells us what colors we have to use also, the brown cart would be just for food, $3.12 would be a lot higher because now we're sending another truck, another cart down your streets every single week, which again, I don't think any city wants another big truck on their streets.
And then to follow up on that question, and this is probably something that's already happening, how do we track and enforce someone from putting like a shoe in their green waste?
So that's what's going to happen with the lid flipping that I mentioned. That is a new component about doing the contamination monitoring. And then we, the, the, the folks, whether it's Belin or some other staff or even city staff, they'll tag the container right then and there and list on their items that can't go in. And there'll be a couple lines that they could write, shoes, you know? We get a lot of shoes in the blue bin. People, I guess they think we're going to take it and we're going to pull that stuff out also and take it to the goodwill, but I assure you with the other stuff that's in those recyclables, no one wants to wear those shoes.
I've got a marketing idea. So somebody now needs to invent locks to put on the lids because what if your neighbor puts some nefarious waste in your can and you get charged criminally for it?
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Or you've already seen your neighbors dumping in your stuff.
I'm glad to know that we're not doing it the way San Francisco is doing it. I can't think of anything San Francisco does that I would like to emulate. Can you?
They have nice bridges.
Maybe a red bridge.
Their COVID rate is way down compared to the rest of the state, but outside of that.
All right, I'm sorry, you had more questions?
One more and then I'm going to tag off. So you mentioned the soil, it can be used for city purposes. What currently happens, because I, from my understanding, your very first or second slide, we already have some kind of compost going on. So if the city wanted to use some of the produce that is produced, is there a cost to the city? How much is the cost? What is currently, what's the current procedure for all that produce that you do?
So we, we do have the compost, but there would be a cost for the city. The city's probably purchasing mulches there is already, but to meet and fulfill this requirement that the state's going to say, okay, show us your documents, what have you procured to close the loop, is how they're referring it to with the organic waste. So we're not there yet, but we could obviously present those numbers. We know what the total the city has, we can share with the city. I would probably say that Jarb would probably go back and look at existing records to see what kind of mulch the city brings in on an annual basis to your parks or for other city projects or gardens and see how much of that we could use in compost. But will definitely be a solution for the city.
We have our own wood chippers.
Okay. And that, that in itself, so you may not even need it, but as long as you can show that, that you're already doing your own wood chipping in the city, I think we try it and see if we could check the box with that, with CalRecycle.
Dr. Daley, I think you're next.
First round?
Let me say a couple of things. First of all, you did a very nice job presenting this. You know, it's, it looks like a whole bunch of bureaucracy to me and you presented it in a very attractive as possible way, so.
Thank you.
Second thing I'll say is I know that this is a state mandate, so nothing I say, nothing this council does will make any difference.
I will not take it personal, I promise.
But it'll be good for my blood pressure if I vent a little bit. There is a well-known maxim that basically says, any strength carried to an extreme becomes a weakness. I believe in the science of climate change and, and global warming and so forth. I've done more than a little bit of reading about it. And I'm not a formal scientist, but I, I, I'm certainly convinced as are a lot of other But in my view, this appears to me to be a strength carried to an extreme. If they want to track some of this waste in major institutions like medical centers and large restaurants and so forth, it's even, that's a bit of a stretch for me, but I, I could accept it. But when you're talking about, I, I have a, I represent a very active neighborhood. I mean, these are people that are very engaged. And if we're starting to track their waste of whether their kids finished their beans or not, I, I mean, I'm telling you, I'm going to hear about it and they're not going to be happy. And so it doesn't change anything, but in my view, trying to be appropriately conservative about conservation and protecting our environment and so forth, I'm on board. But how much farther can it go when you're talking about tracking this kind of waste at an, at an individual home? I promise you, you're not going to hear about it, I'm going to hear about it though, I know.
I would imagine we're going to get some phone calls when we start lifting lids, looking in trash cans.
Without question. And I've got, yeah.
And we haven't even discussed that yet.
I'll get your number, so I know where to refer them.
Yeah, we haven't even discussed it yet, but I'm sure we're probably going to get some phone calls.
What, the, the, the only other comment that I have is that Jarb, I would recommend, I read the, the single sheet you gave me today that's going to be mailed out to all the citizens and that's fine. I would strongly urge in terms of communication effectiveness, if there is a brief, you know, two or maximum three paragraph letter from the mayor that says, this isn't our idea, you know, this isn't, this wasn't the city council's idea, but we must, you know, we're mandated to do this to kind of alleviate some of the people that are going to be angry and not understand this. Go ahead.
Yes, the letter does say, say mandate.
Yeah, yeah, but, but I'd like a cover letter from the mayor, signed by the mayor. I'll, I'll help write it. I don't mind drafting that, but something that's more readable and less legalistic because a lot of people aren't going to read that. I'm just telling you now.
This is, at the beginning was, it was five pages and I.
So this is, oh well, good for you. Now I'm wanting to reduce it to about two paragraphs with Phil Duper's name at the bottom.
Is it going to start with?
Even his telephone number.
Ron, is it going to start with, this is a bunch of garbage?
I'm with you. And, and, you know, I mean, it's anybody that follows city council, which I don't know, maybe four or five people. You know, we have our, each of the council members has our own political values and priorities and so forth, and I'm an outlier at times and that's okay. But on this, this one, I, I'm going to agree with their real conservative wing and say, but you have nothing to do with that. And I understand that. So anyway, it doesn't make any, and, and the, the other thing that's frustrating to me that I think will resonate with you, Dusty, is the amount of additional bureaucracy that this is going to generate.
It's a lot of work.
Is obscene. It's just obscene. But anyway, my pleasure, my blood pressure's down to where it belongs now, so I feel better. But you did a nice job. I don't like what you presented, but I'm not sure you like what you presented either.
We have your back. We're in this together. I will say that.
Interestingly, I had to, well, I had the pleasure of sitting with three or four kids who's, had to have a project and the project was interviewing a government official and so forth. So I sat down with them and I was explaining things and I happened to mention, well, you know, here's how government works and I was talking about different things and I was saying many times, a higher level government will pass on to a lower level government a mandate so that the people will blame the lower level government, you know, and I also didn't realize I probably wasn't giving the most idealistic view of government. But anyway, so I was telling them that and one of them looked at me and said, well, that's not fair, they're just doing it so you can get the blame. And, and said it, I didn't even mention it at that point and they brought it out and I thought, man, a little 10-year-old figured that out, that's good. But that's what happens all the time, it's like with our sewer rates and that kind of thing, so. A quick question, we have to show that we have some sort of compliance or something. Is it possible to do some sort of global check of, of dumps that come from Loma Linda to see globally how we're doing as a city and then only if we exceed a certain mess per tonnage, then go to the lid flipping after that?
No.
Well, that's an idea.
It's, it's, in that 127-page document that Milford showed, it tells us what we have to do. We, or really everything is quite frankly, they put everything on the city. As your hauler, we're here to say, we're going to help you and do that. But no, it's, it's very clear in that 127-page document.
Now, is all the lid flipping taking place out at the curb or are they coming into your backyard?
No, 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 at the curb. Once they're out the street for collection.
Into your kitchen.
So theoretically, you could just wait for the truck, roll your thing out there, let them dump it and then roll it back in.
Be careful out there. Every week it happens.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
At my house, it's every week. The truck goes up the street and that gives me a warning and then I, then I run my cans down.
You're lucky mine comes on my side first. I usually get a warning across.
So you're out there in a bathrobe running your carts across the street.
For the, for the historical record and the three people that are watching out there in TV land, is, was, is there some type of explanation on how we get that food waste into the green cart without using any other container? So do I need to wheel it into the kitchen so when my kid is done with his beans, he scrapes them off directly? And, and I know that's obviously being very facetious and we've, we've talked about it here too, but, but realistically, that's what we're talking about.
So we do have, and it's something that we can discuss with Jarb, but I think that because this is a statewide initiative, you're probably going to find them again, as I mentioned, whether it's at maybe the Walmart supercenters or the Home Depots or the Lowe's. We do have 32-gallon, or not 32-gallon, I'm sorry. What, what's the size, eight-gallon? Eight-gallon pails that residents can purchase, they're $7. We deliver it to the home, it's elective, we, we're not going to make everyone take one that doesn't want one, but we, we can talk to Jarb because we have a supply, but we don't have a supply for all of our cities, so we'd have to plan and find out if someone wants to do that or make that available. But we have offered those to cities and it's $7 and it's a little kitchen pail and they're actually dishwasher safe. So you'd have them sitting maybe outside if your garage door is attached to your kitchen or wherever there's a safe place to put it, that you put your food waste in there.
Can you, I think you'll sell more if you call them slop jars.
Slop jars. Put a trademark on that. Yeah, kitchen pails, but that's.
What, what are the risks? I mean, I, I, I'm pretty good with data, but I still don't, didn't fully understand the measurables and I don't need to. Jarb needs to, but I don't need to. But what are the risks? If, how are we deemed to not be in compliance? And I, I, I've got a neighbor that I can tell you now is going to come down and say, you know, what's the risk for me in this? I think this is stupid and how do I respond to those kinds of questions?
So here's, that's a very good question. This diversion requirement that I covered in the first couple slides of 75% by 2025 is a state goal. It's not a city goal. It doesn't say every city in the state has to divert 75% of food waste from the landfill or yard waste. It's a state goal. As long as we can document and show that we are following all of the requirements outlined in that document and the, the state feels good that the city is making a good faith effort, you're sending out your annual mailers, you're doing your annual route audits, you're tracking compliance, come 2024, CRNR hands the list of customers to the city and says, hey, these folks, businesses mostly, are just refusing, they're refusing to sign up for an organics program because they have to order a separate bin. See at the home, the residents are different, they already have their three containers. We're still going to get yard waste, which is part of the organic waste definition, but we may not get all their food scraps. At the end of the day, a person has the right to make that decision. So I think, here's what I think. I've been in this business for 33 years. What I think is, there's not going to be a lot of pushback coming on the cities as long as you are showing good faith that you're doing all these items.
And they're primarily focused on large businesses and restaurants.
Large businesses, as long as you say, everybody at the home now has an organics cart that can take food and yard waste, the box is checked. You're complying. Where we will do our part is when we're going through the organics, for some that are putting stuff in there that doesn't belong, like putting a garden hose, we see that a lot. I don't know if they think they're cleaning out the backyard with the yard trimmings and, oh, let me throw this old plastic toy that's crumbling, throw that in, throw on a yard hose, whatever is in the, that, that seems to happen. You could tell, in my head, I visualize things that I see in a backyard end up a lot in that green cart. Those are the things that we're going to look for.
So if I can ask you and Milford a question that I asked Jarb and Conrad this afternoon, I don't know where, it was some TV program and they were talking about recycling and what a huge, huge industry and issue it's become. And it was the first time I learned that the United States was shipping most of our recyclables to China.
Correct.
And then China said, no, we've got more than we can handle. And then they started sending them to Malaysia. Now Malaysia said, we don't want it either. And there's this big mystery that they left us with as to where all that stuff is going. So I, I mean.
So we do have end markets within the United States that we can ship to. We're also shipping to other countries as well that will take, other, outside of Malaysia or, or China. China is still accepting recyclable materials. The, the term that they came up with called the China Sword, which went into effect January 1 of 2018, that required all inbound recyclables not to have more than 0.5% contamination. And that in the, the ships taking all the baled recyclables over, that they were doing spot checks and at the docks, they would, they will reject a load if they put their, they have a wand or something that they, it's like, I guess, got a camera on it that can look and let's say a bale of mixed paper and if they see that, who knows, if a banana peel gets in there or something that's in that paper bale that shouldn't be in there, they will reject that load. And the company that shipped it has to pay for it to be shipped back. So with that being said, the recycling industry, for any of us that process recycling, has become very difficult because we've had to hire, slow, the sort lines, if you're familiar with the MRFs, if they cover that, the material recovery facility, all the recyclables go across the sort line, we've had to slow them down and add more staff to pick out a lot of the stuff that's in there that shouldn't be in there. And we see literally the kitchen sink, tire rims, garden hoses. I've seen a boa constrictor come across that we've had pictures of, what, how the snake, huge snake got in the recyclables, we don't know. The point is, is that it's changed very much. So, but there still is places that it's going, but with that being said, the cost to process recycling costs more than taking it to the landfill now because we have to do so much work to clean the recycling. It actually costs us more to process recycling than to put it in the landfill.
That's what this program said too.
Yeah.
Thank you. You've been very informative, I appreciate it.
Point of clarification, on the lid flipping, is it only to confirm that nothing but organic is in the organics thing?
Yes.
So you're not checking the recycler or checking the trash?
No, they're just, we're flipping the lids. The whole point is, it's edu, it's really what it's come down to is education, is to educating folks to say, hey, you've put the shoes, you put, you put the shoes in your green waste bin, donate those to the goodwill, it's just some communication. And we'll take all that data, you never know, we might be seen, let's just say we find a ton, I'm going to use the same. find a ton, I'm gonna use the same example, we find a ton of shoes that are popping up in the organics bin that shouldn't be there, then we probably get with Jarb and we say, okay, here's the data. Let's just do a little main, like a fun fact. Did you know shoes cannot go into any of the three carts at your home? You should donate them to goodwill or to Better Use or, you know, give them to a neighbor that maybe could use a pair of shoes. But, um, they, they could go to the landfill, but I, if, if they're good shoes, if they're decent, I'd like to see people try to, to donate them if they could. But you're right, they could, those could go in the trash bin. Let's just say we all have a pair, that they're tearing the sides, then those would go into the trash cart that we still have at the curb. But that's really the purpose, is really to, to try to just educate people to keep the material as clean as possible.
Your, your answer said, you're only gonna flip the green lid? You're not gonna look in the blue or the black? Is that what you're saying?
Yep, we're not, trust me, we're not looking in the black. The blue, the blue is still out. We're still actually waiting for some responses and let me tell you why. With the new law, Cal Recycle, in the organic definition, has identified paper products as organic waste. We have spent far too much time since nineteen eighty-nine telling folks to put your paper in your blue bins, to try to tell them, oh, don't put it there, put it here. What we're trying to get clarification still on is, we may be required to flip some of those blue lids, which is more work for us because we're not pulling that waste out of that stream and putting it into the organics bin. We're still waiting. But our focus will be on the green bins.
Can't you just get it when you do the sorting of the, of the blue bin anyway? At the, back at the home office, do you have to do it in my bin?
Oh, you mean at the curb?
Yeah, no, why, why can't you just?
It's not to be taken out and sorted when we?
Cause you're sorting the blue bin anyway.
Yes, that is, that is true.
So why don't you just, why don't you just take the paper out there instead of going to seven thousand houses and flipping lids?
Yeah. I couldn't agree with you more, but again, this, this document that the state has, they want us to do it at the curb.
Civil disobedience.
Looks like C and R, uh, CRNR is doing a lot of work here and offering to do a lot of stuff. Um, I have two cabinets in my kitchen, but it looks like I'll need a third. Will CRNR come and put that in for me or?
I don't know if we're doing that yet, but let me find out. That might come for the review cost of additional resources in twenty-twenty-two.
Alrighty.
Round two. All right, I'm gonna keep this one shorter and I'll ask, um, some of the questions from our city manager. Um, three que, two questions. You said we were ninety-seven percent business compliant and ninety-four percent multifamily resident compliant, which was better than other, um, cities. What's different about Loma Linda that has caused us to be that way?
I actually, I think I'll defer to Belin on that one. Or do, do you know Jarb?
That's the reason, right there. You see this lady? She's the reason. She calls on every one of them, every apartment, every multifamily, every business, and she goes back and checks. She does lid flipping.
Yeah, so, yeah, I've been doing lid flipping.
To make sure it's done right.
I've been doing lid flipping. I go to your businesses. I, I introduce myself, I talk to them and I encourage them to do the right thing. For the most part, Loma Linda, they've done the right thing. I mean, we have one or two, you know, that haven't, but, um, you know, they're, they're getting there, you know, just encouraging them. Um, they'll have to get there eventually. I work with your city staff, your code enforcement. You know, nobody wants to cite anyone. We just want them to do the right thing. Um, I do, you know, they, at first, when we first introduced it, they did put bags, they did put shoes, um, but it was just training. And once they see the end result, um, they've done, you know, really good. So it's been really impressive. So even with the state, the state's come out and done their audit with us last year and they were really happy with Loma Linda and everything that's happened.
You're on her schedule, Bobbin, so.
I'm just gonna make commentary on that. I, I think that, that's just the, the reality of the world, right? It's, it's punishing the, the virtuous. And so, uh, probably in a lot of communities, people are trying to do the right thing in, anyway, without the government forcing them to. And then you look at the dichotomy with places like LA and Skid Row and all the nonsense and trash and food waste and stuff that's going on over there, but yet we can't, we can't comment on that. That's socially not acceptable. So that's my commentary for the night. Um, and I try to stay middle of the road, but, like, I, you, that was a great quote. What was that again about? Can you give that quote again?
Any strength carried to an extreme becomes a weakness.
I love that.
So if you're a hard worker, it's a strength. But if you take it to an extreme, then it's a problem.
All right, so my second and last question, um, just following on what Dr. Daley said, uh, on an individual level, how invasive will it actually be? It sounds like no one really wants to, I'm not gonna say enforce, but punish someone for, you know, making simple mistakes. Um, and it looks, or at least from the sound of it, that we're focusing more on businesses and big family residences. Um, for an individual, so for myself, right, uh, can I expect a lot of scrutiny?
No, from the, for the individual homeowner, really what you're adopting and, and what Cal Recycle is, it was kinda mentioned, someone mentioned it, um, Long Beach, for example, um, one of our reps, sales reps, I oversee our open market, commercial sales team, and she, in Long, at Long Beach, um, it's not franchised, so their commercial is open. And they, those businesses, a lot of them in the shoreline village area that we all know, um, have flat out said, because it's a cost, it's, it's an expense that they don't wanna pay for another container. So they have a trash bin, they have a recycle bin, and they don't wanna pay for an organics bin. And they, they very nicely have told us, that's fine, I'm not gonna get it until I'm forced to have it, which would be the time when the city comes in, we provide the list and do the follow-up and say, hey, if you don't get your reci, your organics bin, you're gonna be fined. Really, at the curb, it's just education. That's what the state wants us to do. They want us to do random sampling on the routes and leave a tag. And that happens today already. Um, if we see two-by-fours sticking out of the recycle bin, you get a tag that says, hey, this isn't a recyclable item.
It was one time. You guys couldn't cut me a break on that.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor. I shouldn't have said that. Anyway, so that's really what it is. It's really just about education because at the end of the day, I mean, Belin said it, people don't know. I mean, in all, the problem we have is, and, and I'll take this back to the industry, we kinda created the problem with people recycling things they shouldn't. The little, uh, arrows, the triangle arrows on the bottom of everything that says recyclable, well, there's a value to those commodities and then there's some that are just made out of recyclable material. Well, everyone put that same triangle and in, in, you know, afterthought, I wish we would rebrand and say, or just say maybe made out of recyclable material. Don't put that same, but that causes a lot of problems. So it's, it's the same thing that we've been doing for years, letting people know, hey, you can't put that garden hose in, you can't put that kid's toy, even though it's got the little triangle symbol on the bottom. It's not a recyclable commodity. Correct. And the state is not saying how much you have to find. They're not saying what that dollar amount needs to be, um, but they are saying the cities need to have something in place. And, and that's up to, to you to decide when you look at the ordinance with the enforcement mechanism that they require.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I think we beat this trash to a.
I've got one.
Oh.
I've been talking trash almost all my life, so I'm good.
I've got one question. I, I, I have invested in the best garbage disposals anywhere. So all of my food waste goes into BOD down at the, at the sewage treatment plant. Is there any regulation in there that says I can't do that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
The camera will be installed at your garbage disposal on Tuesday.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Milford wants to say a couple comments. Thank you.
First of all, uh, I, I think it's a misnomer that, it's a term that isn't really clear to us common folk, and that's the contamination. Contamination sounds like a real traumatic thing, but it, all it means is that you put the wrong thing in the wrong bucket. And, and it's just, it's an intermingling, if you will, that is improper. Um, and the only thing that, that we would be looking at and flipping is that somebody's putting the boards or, or.
I, for the record, I wouldn't put the two-by-fours in the trash because they're worth gold right now.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I'd just be selling them on eBay.
Sell them. We really, I, I have, it has been a, a real honor for me to be involved with CRNR. And I, it's a high-quality company that, that really, it's, you know, owned by a father and son and, and it's a private company and, and they are really conscientious people. The other aspect of what I'm involved with is the fact that the city of Loma Linda is a delightful city for this company to, to work in. And that's part of the reason for the ninety-seven percent and the ninety-four percent. There's just a spirit of cooperation here that we don't see in some other cities. And, and it's, it makes the job easier. It certainly makes Belin's job easier. And, uh, we really appreciate the opportunity to work with the city staff and we are available. Everybody, I think, has my cell number. Um, if there's ever any problems at all, I'm available twenty-four seven. And, uh, thank you for the time we've taken this evening. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent calendar.
Move it.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Jindal? Oh, I'm sorry. The motion is to approve the items on the consent calendar. My apologies. Councilman Jindal?
Okay, moving on. We're calling a roll vote, right?
Pardon?
We're, we're doing a roll call vote?
I thought.
Yeah, we had a first from Dr. Rigsby and a second from Dr. Daley. So we're just calling a vote.
So we can pull something for a question?
You can, but you gotta be fast.
So actually, I'm not gonna pull anything. Just a quick question for number seven and eight. Or just five lines of your first, right?
And there will be a, a hearing on, on June eighth.
Okay.
I changed that to an aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Lenard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yep.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Moving to old business. And this is where we need to set historical commission term lengths. Mr. City Manager or Assistant City Manager, this might take longer than the last one. I'm just thinking.
Can I just move it and make it go fast?
Wave, wave the reading and move to approve, please.
Thank you. I just did that.
You might have lost your, we have a first and a second. Might have lost a vote, but.
I'd actually like to make a motion that we table it for the next meeting. We need to set a record, we need to set a record as to how long it's taken on one given night.
You moved it seconded. Whenever you guys are ready.
I, I know, but, you know, we're gonna have to re-explain if we don't take the time to. We probably should wait.
Can I call the question?
Are we ready to, are we ready to vote? All right. If you, is that, is that your motion then to, uh, waive reading and we have to set, uh?
Exactly, yeah. Wave the reading and set.
This is the second reading.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that your second? Madam Clerk?
Okay. I just wanna clarify, are we doing just the ordinance or both the ordinance and the resolution?
Just the ordinance.
Just the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. And the motion is to adopt council bill number O dash twenty-twenty-one dash zero-five and the ordinance is entitled an ordinance of the city council of the city of Loma Linda, amending the Loma Linda municipal code, chapter seventeen point eight zero pertaining to terms of office for historical commission members. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Lenard?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And Mayor Daley is not, is absent for this vote.
Indisposed.
Thank you.
Okay, now, moving on to the.
To the resolution.
Resolution.
This is a resolution to set the term limits for four years. Since you, you guys have opted to set a limit, which we've recommended four years, with staggered two and four-year terms. Um, staff suggestion is, I have all eleven names in the cup here. Uh, there's, there's five people on the council. You each pull a name. That's the, either the two or the four-year term, the four-year term. The other guys get the two-year term and then we go on with life.
It, that sounds simple, but somehow I don't think it's going to be when we put it in practice, but.
It, it will. I won't drop the cup or anything.
Okay, but we, and then we pick the names and then we're each assigned either a two-year or a four-year or how's that?
You, you pick, you pick a name and whoever you pick is, is the four-year term.
Okay, okay. That's clear.
So it's a random draw?
And then everybody else is the two-year term. One, one name per councilman.
You guys good with that?
So we're calling, we're pulling the twos or the fours?
No, we're pulling the fours. See?
So who's the winner? Which one is the winner? The two or the four?
You're pulling the fours.
And then quick question. So we have more that we're gonna be voting on eventually. Those will be four-year terms, right?
No, this is, this is it. You're going to.
Not the, but we had three other candidates that we were considering.
We already added them.
They're on. Right now you have eleven.
Also, they don't even get a chance for a four-year. It's just whatever we pick.
Well, they will, just in two years, we'll re.
You can structure it any way you choose. That was just the easiest, fairest option that we could come up with.
It works.
Hold on. We have a legal intercession here.
And, okay, so when we, what we'll do is we'll draw and then the Barbara can enter the appropriate terms with the names in the resolution.
So we don't do it publicly?
No, no, we'll do it now. But before you guys vote, you'll have a slate of four and two and four-year people that you vote on. Is that suitable?
Yes.
Clockwise or counterclockwise?
Viewed from above or below?
Look, will we see? Should've initialed them.
I know.
Okay, Madam Clerk, the four-year terms, Georgia Hodgkin, Fred Ramos, Cindy Marshall Nelson, Lori Curtis, and Dick Wiley. And that means the two-year terms will be, will be the rest, yeah. And yet now, now it would be appropriate to vote and accept that.
You have a motion? And a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is to adopt council bill number R dash twenty-twenty-one dash seventeen, setting the historical commission terms at staggered four-year terms, uh, with the names as, as drawn. Um, Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Lenard?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have to congratulate everyone on that. That went far more smoothly than.
I have a question that I wanna slow it down. Does this council bill go into effect in eighteen thousand one hundred and eighty years? That's eighteen thousand one hundred and eighty years.
If you read it correctly, it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I.
I, I, I saw that as I, as I read it. It's a typographical error. My apologies.
Okay.
It is the Blue Zone, but that's a long time.
Moving on to, uh, there's no new business, so moving on to reports of council members.
All right, talking about Blue Zone, this is the fourth item. This is the fourth item that we've had on a similar topic today. So I'll try to keep it brief. So Tree City USA is a program that is, uh, that is a part of the Arbor Day Foundation. I went to college in Claremont and Claremont is known as a city of trees and PhDs for a reason. They have a lot of trees and they have a lot of doctors that reside in the city. Some of our local cities are also a part of the Tree City, including Redlands. We have, I think, the other closest one to us is Moreno Valley. And Riverside, of course. Basically, it's a program where we get recognized for the work that we've been doing. And it sets a structure to have, uh, half flora and half trees within the city of Loma Linda. This was something that a lot of residents wanted within the city. And we've already made a lot of efforts in basically meeting all the criteria that is set by the foundation itself. I wanted to read a few quotes of a study that was done by an Andres Galenix... I hope I said that name right. This individual was a part of the Institute for Health Policy and Leadership at Loma Linda University Health. And they published this research study four years ago. So not too outdated, as some of the writings are still relevant to what's going on in the city right now. But some of the benefits of having trees within the city. So I'll go ahead and get started. Several studies have shown that exposure to green spaces and natural elements have multiple health benefits, ranging from positive effects on memory for healthy individuals and patient populations to improved mental health and recovery times after surgical procedures. Relevant, 'cause we're full of hospitals who deal in these type of activities. While cities and regions show variances for every $1 invested in tree planting or maintenance, community see a $5.82 return on average, a gain that does not take into account the additional well-studied psychological and physiological benefits to humans. I have multiple copies here, which I will be sharing. I, I don't think we're allowed to get up right now and come close. So we have a picture on here, which basically compares trees between Redlands and Loma Linda and how there's a big discrepancy. Clear, you can see one side is green while the other side is brown. Now, in the past four years, the city has done a lot to remediate that situation. My goal, and the goal that citizens have asked for, is that we continue on those steps and make sure that we are basically replacing with trees what we've lost in orange groves. And, and making sure that we have a structure for that in place. And then finally, as a result of commitment to its urban forests through policies, plans, and guidelines, Redlands has been able to maintain and develop its urban street canopy, particularly through times of drought and pest distress. Between 1975 and 2010, Redlands, not unlike Loma Linda, has experienced substantial vegetation and tree cover loss primarily throughout industrial zones and partially throughout citrus groves. In contrast to Loma Linda, residential and downtown areas experience consistent tree and vegetation growth. So I don't wanna compare us to Redlands, but really, the big difference is that Redlands has taken a few more steps than we have. And they've had trees torn down, but they have done a slightly better effort of making sure that those are replanted. So overall, what I would like to ask the council is at the next meeting that we consider becoming a Tree City for Loma Linda.
I would assume that...
Dr. Daley has a question?
Well, I was just gonna say that, that probably would come with some type of presentation, right? Formal presentation, when we do that? 'Cause I have, I have questions too. What, what determines whether or not you qualify? Is it like a per capita number or something like that? I don't know. Is that something we wanna talk about now or bring it back for a...
Either way, but it's a legitimate question that I have as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think for right now, this was just an introduction to it, but correct me if I'm wrong. We're gonna be going into more depth once this is actually a line item.
Okay. It's up to you guys.
Well, if you've got an answer, what is it? I'm curious.
So, so we, we downloaded the standard, the guideline for, for Tree City USA. And it's four requirement. First is to create a tree board or department, of which we already have park and beautification committee that we can utilize for, for tree boards. Second, we need to have a tree care ordinance, which is, right now, the city already have a tree trimming policy that we can modify to meet that, that requirement. Third, it's required that we have the annual budget of at least $2 per capita for this program, of which, you know, we have about 23,000 people. And the budget should be about 46. We spend about $80,000 a year. $20,000 alone is for tree planting every year, if you notice it. And about $60,000 to $80,000 a year for tree trimming. We spend a lot of money trimming trees. So we already meet that, that requirement. And, and the last requirement is we have to have Arbor Days, which is, I'm not sure what day that is, but we can do that, so...
So it's a self-designation, then, basically, that...
Well, we're supposed to have program and, and proclamation.
Like the anniversary of Loma Linda.
So...
Why not?
Well, I was gonna...
Positive mental health benefits, I hear.
And, and one big thing is, as, as part of Area D development, Lona Homer put in 30 acres of parkland. We subdued trees and, and with the next phase, it'll be another 30 acres. So we have another additional 60 acre park.
I, I think it's, from what you said, it's pretty easy to get that designation that we're, uh...
For us.
Yes. Based on what, what we can do quickly.
Palm Desert may have more challenges.
Yes. But then the question then becomes, are we, do we wanna be more aggressive with adding more trees, planting more? 'Cause I know that comes with some costs, too. You mentioned the cost that we already spend in trimming and all that other stuff.
Right.
I'm sure sidewalk maintenance and things like that because of roots. I know, I know you were grimacing when we were talking about that, 'cause I know that's what you were thinking.
I'm more like a, a maintenance guy, so...
But I like, I like the idea. Let's bring it back and...
Yeah. Another benefit of this, we do have, is once they're part of this, they do have grants and they have funding. So if we do decide to pursue...
More aggressive.
A stricter or more aggressive stance on it, we do have that available to us, so... Doesn't hurt. And there's positive benefits.
The only question I had is, and I may have misunderstood, but I thought you had said something about if you remove a tree, you have to replace it. And in Area D, we would be in tough shape, 'cause that was an orange grove.
Yeah. So my point about that is, at least according to the study, you don't have to replace a tree if you take it down. But the point was that the city of Redlands has just done a better job, because they've lost a lot of orange groves as well in the past 20 years. So they've done a slightly better job than Loma Linda has in replacing that with some kind of urban canopy.
I don't, I don't wanna disparage...
They've got lousy roads.
Yeah. Well, this isn't disparaging Redlands, but I don't, I don't think that they're, I think they're resting on stuff that's hundreds of years old. If you look at the old part of town, there are thousands of trees everywhere. But if you look at any of the new development, especially out on the northeast side, there's not much tree replacement going on. So I think they're kinda resting on their laurels. And this, that's not anything negative, but Redlands came with a lot of that that's been there for a long time. And then I, I, I'm not sure I, and again, I gotta be careful. I'm not trying to disparage anybody. I'm not sure how Moreno Valley made, made that. Again, but again, if it's a self-designation and you check a couple of boxes, you can claim that. But if, I don't know if you've driven through Moreno Valley lately. Oh, I don't see a lot of trees over there. But that's just, just personal observation. So, anyway, great idea. I'm looking forward to hearing the presentation on that. Okay. The, the final thing that we have is, I'm gonna do a quick presentation to get the council up to speed. This is something we've talked about before. This is something that, uh, Dr. Daley and I have started work, or, sorry, I'm looking at you and I did it again. Dr. Rigsby and I were working on for a couple of years. Well, it's the hair. It's gotta tell you. So we have been in further discussion with the county of San Bernardino, looking at potentially putting a, a sheriff's station or a new facility to occupy, be occupied by the Sheriff's Department Central Patrol in the groves of Loma Linda, down there in Area D. If you could advance the slide? So currently, uh, we, through our contract with the Sheriff's Department, our deputies operate out of their headquarters building in Loma Linda. And we did some time studies, and that's actually just Google Earth or Google Maps there on the right, with looking at, at about 8:00 in the morning and how long it would take you to get to Central Station from Loma Linda. And you're looking at anywhere between 15 and 20-minute drive to get there. That means that that's what our deputies are driving to come into our city after they have briefing every morning. And when they go back to book evidence or they make an arrest, they have an interview, things like that. So there's a little bit of a loss of productivity that we have, we've identified. Also, when our residents have to drive over there to get reports or interviews with detectives, follow up on things like, you know, maybe their mail was stolen or their house broken into or something like that. It's a little bit out of the way. In terms of the employees there at Sheriff's Headquarters, that's, that's in San Bernardino. It's not, it's not the best and safe location, so it's not the greatest environment for their employees either. And they're running out of space. The, the patrol component only occupies, what, about 20% of that building, if not even that? And so there's a lot of other divisions and a lot of other needs. And so the patrol folks are squeezed into a tiny little corner. They have a lack of parking. There's a lack of food options for their employees when they take breaks and things like that. And there's no, no additional infrastructure for them to expand beyond those, those walls. All right. If you'd advance it, please? So obviously, we know the groves at Loma Linda is our master planned community. It's, it's moving very, very quickly. And this is all stuff we already know, but this was part of a presentation we did for the county CEO about a month ago. Obviously, we're gonna have integrated commercial, residential, and civic facilities. There's plenty of room for growth, access to support and amenities. And we always have to brag about our high-speed fiber, our four, four, I keep getting corrected by Conrad, four concentric rings of fiber around the city, which is pretty, pretty awesome in all of our pre-planned infrastructure here. If you would advance it, please, one more? As we all know, the VA hospital's already there and there are some of the, the, the numbers there on what the, what the VA service is. Go ahead and pass on to the next slide. The senior housing development that we approved is getting under construction right now. And, you know, we'll have upscale senior housing complex there. Go ahead, next slide. There's the multifamily stuff that's also under construction right now, coming in, with high-density, medium, and low-density there. Next slide. And then, of course, all the single-family residences that are gonna be there in the area. And I know you guys know all of this stuff and we've talked about this a lot, but this was more to show the county of kinda what the area was gonna look like. Next slide. And then we also wanted to show them our, the commercial aspect. Obviously, we're looking to, to put some restaurants and some other amenities there, potentially a couple of hotels. It's all gonna have internal connections, be walkable via the paseo and, and the park space. Next slide. Talking about the woodland preserve and the trees and our parks and stuff that we're gonna have there. That obviously prevents a, a pretty neat environment, potentially for their employees. Next slide. And Central Park. This kinda gives us an idea of where the proposed fire station's gonna be and, and where the police station would be next to it. Some of these things are already going to be put in by the developer. Some of the stuff is gonna be our responsibility. And so that's what we're working on right now, is negotiating a, a deal with the county and how we're gonna figure this out. Next slide. The benefits to the county and the sheriff, it's close to major freeways and air changes. For them, right now, when they go anywhere, they have to traverse San Bernardino city traffic. And I think I had in the original slide, it might be in there somewhere, they have to avoid multiple potholes to get anywhere where they're going. We've timed it, and then from, from Loma Linda, it's actually a faster drive to the San Manuel Casino, which they service as well as another contract. Yes. And as you may know and remember, the CH Patrol, Inland Patrol Station will be right across the street on Redlands Boulevard in Bryn Mawr, and they have submitted plans for that building as well. So we're trying to sell to the, to the county that, that this is gonna be kind of like a little law enforcement center. We've given them the option that they could, they could put whatever they want there within reason. We've said it could be as tall as a three-story building with a pretty large footprint. They have the options, adding a dispatch center, IT, CAL ID, some of these other things that they currently have challenges, uh, housing. And then one of the other things we've talked about between the fire department and, and our, and the law enforcement, public safety center is potentially a conference room or training center for, for ongoing training. There are really no great facilities around here for, for police and fire training, for overnight training when, where people stay. And given the fact that we're adding more hotels to our existing hotels that, that have just been put in and the idea that we're gonna have some nice restaurants and some other things there, that could be a, a very attractive thing for, for us to have. Next slide. Some more benefits. This gives us more of a combined operation, integration with our fire department. Potentially, there's an option, we could look at some type of Confire inclusion, 'cause Confire may be looking for some new locations, too. Obviously, we talked about the new hotels, the restaurant shopping. That's a benefit for their employees. And this is also closer to the city of Grand Terrace and the county areas of Colton. And even Redlands, we talked about San Timoteo Canyon, Ritchie Canyon and some of those places. We met with, uh, the city of Grand Terrace, Darb and Conrad and I did. And they are supportive of this. And we're talking to San Manuel right now about it also. Next slide. Our current commitment to the county was we are gonna have the, the land reserved in a pad to remain undeveloped. And we're gonna have all the utilities and everything ready to go there. And right now, we're trying to work collaboratively, collaboratively with the county to identify the revenue stream for how we develop this thing. Next slide. The county was working on some things here, uh, getting us, and they did. They provided us with some initial square footage of what they would need. And those are just some design concept ideas that we kinda threw out there. Next slide. And then, uh, we're, right now, this is where, where we're at. We're trying to figure out who's gonna pay for it. We did apply for some federal grant, grants through Congressman Pete Aguilar's office and a couple of other things. And unfortunately, we didn't make the cut. But we're trying to figure out what we can do to either build this building ourselves and the county inhabit it or, or the county build it. Or even if, even if San Manuel wants to build it, we call it the San Manuel Public Safety Center. It benefits the city of Loma Linda and we, we'd be happy with that. So I think that, one more slide and that's it. That's kinda where we're at. We just wanted to give you guys an update on, on the discussion. The sheriff is, has said multiple times to us that he's 100% supportive of it, but that the county does all the real estate and, and building decisions for him. So now we're just kinda talking to the supervisor and the county CEO on, on what this'll look like. Obviously, the benefit to us is we get, you know, we get our law enforcement closer to us in town. And as we've talked about the last couple of meetings, in terms of mail theft and some of the other things that have been going on here and some of our frustrations, this gives us a little more local control and helps with those quality of life issues, so... It's kinda where we're at.
It's the projected timeline.
So, I don't know. We're thinking, you know, probably a couple of years, but it all depends on the money and what, what, how it's all gonna play out. I've had some really, really interesting conversations with a couple of other cities on some other things that may or may not affect this. But, but, but I think there's definitely some interest. Like I said, Grand Terrace sees the value in this as well, and, and San Manuel. So, so we'll see. We'll see how it develops.
Keep us posted.
Okay. That's it. Anything else from anybody on the dais? Any reports of officers? Okay, that will adjourn our council meeting and will open up the Housing Authority. Do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
I'll move, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Move it.
First and second. Madam Clerk?
And the motion is to approve the items on this consent calendar for the Housing Authority. Councilman Jendal?
Yes.
Councilman Lenard? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. No new business.
Any oral reports?
Do you have one?
Did you ask for public participation?
Oh, yes. Any comments from the public? None? Do you have a comment? So I, I, but you know, as we were just doing this, I was thinking about something. Our necessity to call the individual roll call, is that now alleviated because we're all in purpose, or in person?
As long as public is on Zoom.
Okay. But even though it is open to the public here?
I would just keep doing it as long as we're doing Zoom.
'Cause I think we may continue to do Zoom. It's a, it's a good way to do it. Well, that's what I'm asking, if we have to do the individual. Well, that's what I'm asking, if we have to do the individual.
Is there a motion to approve by a commission, which has to be individual?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We'll adjourn the Housing Authority and open up the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any public comment? Seeing nobody rush forward, Mr. Popescu, nothing? No, okay. I'll move... I'll take a...
Move it.
Motion for the consent calendar? I have a motion. Second, Madam Clerk, sorry.
The motion is to approve the items on the successor agency consent calendar. Counselor Gendal?
Aye.
Counselor Leonard? Counselor Rigsby?
Yep.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you. It passes unanimously.
And that concludes this meeting. Thank you for coming.